Call me north and start with pledge allegiance, standing here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, next we'll start with call order roll call turn on my right.
Counselperson Josh Ern.
Mayor John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Olgin.
Approval of tonight's agenda. And over there.
Um, nothing to add, but when we get to the CIP items, uh, we'll have some revisions on resolutions you got with dates and interest rate recommendations.
Okay. All right.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next is approval of council meeting minutes of September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Questions or discussion on any of that? Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that carries. That takes us into financing budget. Do you have the accounts payable listings with the original listing? Do you have your questions? Please direct me to finance director Carl.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That'll take us into motions general business. First item under motions general business is the twenty twenty-three uh, CIP project, which would be resolutions declaring costs and setting assessment hearing. Staff is setting the assessment hearing for the north twenty twenty-three, excuse me, for the twenty twenty-three north and south CIPs, which includes improvements on Fifth Avenue Southeast from First Street to Sixth Street and Sixth Street to Ninth Street. First resolution needed is to declare the cost in order preparation assessments for the twenty twenty-three south capital improvement project. The total cost of improvements was two million, one hundred sixteen thousand, ninety-three dollars, seventeen cents. City portion is one million, eight hundred eighty-five thousand, six hundred two dollars, forty-three cents. The cost to be assessed against the property owners is two hundred thirty thousand, four hundred ninety dollars and seventy-four cents. Second resolution needed is to declare the cost in order preparation of the assessments for the twenty twenty-three north capital improvement project. The total cost of those improvements was four million, two hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred six dollars, thirty-five cents. The city portion of this is three million, eight hundred two thousand, two hundred forty-six and ninety-eight cents. The cost to be assessed against the property owners is four hundred ninety thousand, one hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. The third and fourth resolutions needed is to call public hearings on the assessments. Staff is recommending, well, they're gonna give a different recommendation, I take it, aren't you? It's recommending that, uh, a public hearing be held at the Sturfield Fire Hall on November fourteenth at the regular council meeting. So, I guess we want to talk about that a second. We're thinking about.
Yes, and you know, the projects are similar, but yet they were both unique. Yeah, each had different, uh, things about them. So rather than have the citizens kind of mix and match which one, uh, thought, why don't we do one like you normally do at your regular meeting? So one can still be on the fourteenth. And then the other suggestion was, how about the day before, we do the other one?
What time would you suggest on that?
Monday the thirteenth.
The thirteenth at that time?
Whatever works for you guys.
Yeah. So if you wanna move it up or like that.
Can you move it to six or whatever works?
I think it was a good idea, cause there was several things that had to be changed on the south end that didn't really match up with the north end and.
So the north side ended up costing pretty much double what the south side did?
It's twice, it's wider and it's, and it's wider.
And truck road, so a different, um, little bit different, a difference on materials.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay. Was Josh?
Yeah, that works for me.
Jeremiah?
Yep. I have a thing.
All right, which do you wanna do first?
And overall, since you adopted that policy, for the most part, they should go, go well.
So which, which end of the project do you wanna do Monday? Make any difference?
You gotta get the big one done.
Do the north on Monday, and we'll do the south on the fourteenth then. That still gives you plenty of time to get stuff done, correct?
Yes, um, what time do you wanna do it?
Oh. What?
What?
Let's flip flop them.
What?
The south on Monday and the north on Tuesday.
And why don't you do, why don't you get people to get to kind of time to get home, do it at six thirty versus six thirty?
That's fine, but what do you wanna do?
Sean would like to switch it to the south on Monday and the north on Tuesday.
Why? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Why?
It's just staff recommendation.
Why?
You wanna make her say it?
But I want a bigger, a bigger thing on a meeting night.
Huh?
You're doing the bigger of the two on the meeting night?
It'd be less. It won't be bigger, it'll be less.
It won't be as contentious.
Less contentious, okay, fair enough.
All right.
Do you need four different motions here?
Yes, okay, so Monday the thirteenth.
Yep, so let's, first new dates and then times.
Yep, so Monday the thirteenth.
So the third, your third council action request on this one, we're looking at making that one, the south capital improvement project assessment hearing on Monday, right? I'll make that motion. Six thirty is fine.
Just wait, cause there's other changes that you may wanna improve or not.
Uh, this was updated.
So are we gonna do adopt, we're gonna go rate, can we do number one, adopt resolution declaring price?
Yeah, hey, we're starting to talk about other stuff.
Okay, let's hear it.
Then we'll get the language to fall in, cause we'll have to customize the resolutions for our formal archive documents with this information we're giving.
All right.
So the one item is to divide them up, just to keep each neighborhood separate with the items they had.
Yep.
Then, normally, if we were in a bonding situation, we talk about, um, those that wanna elect to do the payment process, a one percent over prime. Well, this one, we've been able to use our own financing for it. And so what we're requesting of you to give the citizens another little break is to have, which, if it was a bonding situation, we had to do that, it'd be about what, eight, nine percent interest?
Eight and a half percent right now.
So it'd be nine. Right now, um, Carla was able to, uh, find an average of where all our CDs are, and they're about the five percent. So we just thought, let's reduce that normal typical policy to, did it come out?
About five percent, and that is one of the things that in that new assessment policy that you, you guys just adopted. It does state in there that if you're bonding for it, normally that you do one percent over what you're bonding for. But if you're not bonding for it, basically you guys have the opportunity, you can set that to whatever. And the discussion that Phil and I had was, well, if we would have that money, have it put in the bank, it would be making about five percent interest. So do we look at doing something like that, get the citizens another, a break to try to help them out based on the situation of the economy? You know, cause we're not in a time to hurt anybody, we wanna help them as much as possible.
Where does that fit into our resolutions here? Are you using?
So that for your resolution declaring cost to be assessed in order preparations that propose assessment, that is number two in both the north and the south one on there?
So we're gonna just change, well, it's already written here, the eight point five to five percent.
Correct.
Cause what's being suggested, right?
Yeah.
I have no problem with that, actually.
I don't either. Well, we need to vote on that then?
I'll make the motion to change it from eight point five to five for the south side, for the whatever one that is. Okay. I guess that would be the number one adoption, right?
We gotta do it separate for each one? All right. Motion's made, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that carries. So, does that take care of number one, Cheryl, or we gotta redo the resolution? Okay, now we're going to number two. As for the north capital improvement, we have a motion to lower it from eight to five on that one.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that carries. Does that take care of that one, Cheryl? All right, now to number three, adopt resolution calling a hearing on the assessments for the twenty twenty-three south capital improvement project. That would be Monday, October thirteenth.
Uh, that one can actually stay as is with the fourteenth.
No, no.
No, that one they wanted to do, yeah, the south one's gonna go on Monday at November.
November, north is Tuesday.
November fourteenth.
Thirteenth, thirteenth, Monday.
So I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution for the south side assessment hearing. Do we have the thirteenth at the fire hall again, I would assume?
Yep.
At six thirty.
At six thirty.
Comment on that until we have our business meeting on Monday night?
Oh, that's your reschedule.
Can we do it at the Civic Center?
Um, I'm sorry.
Can we do it at the Civic Center?
Yep, yep, yep.
Or, or Wednesday. It's free Wednesday, it's just Mondays not free.
Let's do it Monday at the Civic Center, then if that works.
All right, so I will make my motion to that.
Over, fine.
That'll work, November thirteenth, six thirty at the Civic Center.
Yep.
Motion's made, wait a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Number four, adopt resolution calling hearing on assessments for the twenty twenty-three north capital improvement project, November fourteenth at seven at the fire hall. Correct? Did you say at seven, or do we just?
No, because it's not a resolution.
Okay. So it'll be at the fire hall, November fourteenth for the north. Um, you got a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that carries. Does that wrap that up then? All right. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Wastewater treatment, mixer cover project change order number three. This is kind of a reverse change order.
It is.
It is. It says attached, please see change order number three for the wastewater treatment plant mixer cover project. This reflects a unit price items that were included with some of the concrete repairs with estimated quantity, and these were not used in full. So the change order will reduce the total contract to only include the quantities that were used. So if you look at, we got a twelve thousand dollar deduction in there.
Correct.
Perfect. Anybody wanna fight over that? Okay, council action requests to approve change order number three as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions or discussion about it? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that carries. Does that takes us out of motions general business? The mayor's staff consult reports. Mayor's report, come in. The city would like to send their sympathies out to the families of Tony Chia, Doris Peterson, Nell Gekke, James Haiga, Isabel Morris, Jim Christie, and Jody Smith-Carr. And let's not forget, the firefighters' open house will be tomorrow night, Wednesday, from five to eight. And, uh, Brandon, thanks you guys. That was a great breakfast out there, the school visits, the kids enjoyed that. How's the breakfast turnout? Was it a record setter or not quite?
Uh, we were up from last year, added in my update here, so.
Okay. I don't wanna spoil your update.
I can, I can share it now, so we served eight hundred and twenty-one people, which, uh, equates up to one person every twenty-nine seconds.
All right.
So we're right through, so I thought that was pretty good.
That's pretty good. Good deal. Thank you. The little free pantries, thank you to the Boy Scout Jacob Eadie. We built four little pantries to help feed Sturfield summary. And don't forget that the Sturfield area community foundation is holding a pantry drive this week. Drop off items in the trailer parked at Fairway. And thank you for helping the community out with that, and they, you've got a list of things, most needed items. So, if you wanna look in the store, imagine I was in the store this week. They really appreciate some of that, but anything you can give is well appreciated, so thank you. Don't forget, the morning lions will hold their white cane days this weekend. Be sure to support them and all the local businesses. You're gonna be at the Fairway and Quick Trip.
Quick Trip.
Casey's. They'll be out there. Stop in, visit with them, come out with their white games. All right, oh, congratulations to Justin, stand up. Justin and Ivy, they were just happily married on Friday, October sixth, twenty twenty-three. They're gonna try and hang in there till their honeymoon and they'll learn. All right, let's go with Justin.
One day at a time.
Before you know it, it's forty-seven years later. All right, that's all I have in my report tonight. Oh, I'd like to also just throw out there, the skate park looks fantastic, public works, done a great job, everybody evolves, done a wonderful job with that, so thanks a lot on that. Other than that, I'm done. City administrators report?
Yeah, report in your packet. Um, just a quick follow-up on that. Monday the sixteenth, the Lowe's folks are gonna be helping us out, getting some more work done between ten and two. So I know that may conflict with work schedules, but if you get a chance, maybe try to stick your head in. Otherwise, what we're gonna do, I talked to Sandra, we'll figure out some kind of formal proclamation, thank you, to give to the Lowe's corporation, maybe to coincide with when they do a grand opening or ribbon cutting, as our communities thank you for that wonderful grant. And, uh, so then obviously you'll get to be a part of that, uh, when that comes up. And I think they're looking at the spring for that, so we'll keep you posted. Um, and then I just included in the back of my report, uh, two park projects. So if you haven't been out to either park, you can see a little progress on how they have been going and how they've been getting built, so. Neat, neat, wonderful new assets for our parks itself. And that should do it.
Looks like the concession sand bath will cool pretty well, won't it? Good deal. All right, thank you, Bill. Any questions for administrator? All right, thank you, Bill. Finance director Carla?
Um, still working on a budget, trying to get towards the final budget. Um, was able to go up to the Minnesota GFOA conference, was just fabulous, and a lot of really great information. There was over two hundred and seventy finance people all in one place together, so it was a bunch of geeks, it was great. Um, so the other thing with final budget is, um, would like to do a council workshop, and Joe and I have kind of talked about this as well, is to kind of include final budget stuff and a couple of items for the twenty twenty-four, um, CIP project, and get some of those things ironed out. Uh, didn't know what worked better, if you wanna do it before council on the fourteenth, or we can do it before the meeting on the thirteenth, whatever one works best. Um, if we do it on the fourteenth, we could do like a five fifteen start. Um, should give us plenty of time to get through everything for that one. Or obviously, then we would go, I mean, if we could go earlier on the thirteenth, that would work as well too.
Josh, I knew that.
I think either day works. Whatever works best for you guys.
Yeah, work for whatever you guys can settle on. What do you two think?
I mean, it's do what I'm told.
Really? What works the best?
It, it honestly, we're, we're open either day. We're gonna be around, it's gonna open either day. It really depended on your guys' schedule and the kind of work that we had those two days in a row. We'll try to do it right beforehand, so it's not another meeting of meetings for you guys, so.
All right.
Um, is Monday, is that, uh, hardcore meeting?
Yeah.
Brad probably would be tied up.
That's fine.
He's gonna have to miss it anyway, cause of the because of the discussion meetings, so. It's at six thirty? Oh, yeah, doesn't matter.
The biggest thing would be work schedules, because obviously we will start like five fifteen on Tuesday, so then we needed to, if we start an hour earlier, that's four forty-five. So I don't know if that's gonna make a difference for you guys too.
Not usually. Not for me anyways.
I don't have a calendar, so I don't know.
I got a pretty tough schedule, I'm like, I'm gonna. What is, okay. So Monday, six thirty meeting, so the proposal here is either to do it an hour before that, right? How much time is it?
It's about an hour, about an hour and fifteen minutes, hour and a half, just, I don't know.
Or Tuesday.
Tuesday before the meeting.
And you're saying it went to five forty-five, you said?
No, it'd be five fifteen.
Five fifteen. I don't care. I don't wanna go to any of them, so I don't, it's, I'm gonna go to all of them, but I don't want.
You wanna do the Tuesday one, guys?
Whatever works best for you guys.
Cause we gotta be here anyhow for that one, for sure. Tuesday?
Do Tuesday.
Five fifteen?
Okay.
Fire hall.
Yep, with that, it'll be at the fire hall since our meeting's down there.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or anything?
Cheryl, can you send out a reminder of that, by chance, please?
All right. All right, Sean, public works director report?
Uh, reported in there, uh, just to update you on where things sit. Uh, they got the frames all up for the concrete to be poured tomorrow at the amphitheater for the entire outside stuff, he's gonna start working on the stone immediately after. Uh, so that's moving along. Hopefully we get everything sealed up here shortly. Uh, and then the skate park, obviously Bill filled in, the, everything's built over there. I would like to throw a compliment out there to Trog and Woody, the two guys that were building. They were fantastic to work with, they did a great job, they stuck at it. They even added on size buys to some of the features for the bid price, just because the kids, there were so many kids up on top of it. He's like, I'm gonna build that bigger out the back, and he went and redid it, uh, painted all the stuff, went over and above.
The guy I saw on Facebook, the one guy was doing like kind of an announcement and talking about, hey, we got a twelve foot platform, and he's using all these lingo that I don't remember from back in my skateboard days, it's changed, but who, he's affiliated with the company building the stuff, or what, what is that guy tied to, you know?
I didn't see which video you're talking about, Cheryl.
Sandra said there's a blogger that came out, that is, a guy that is from this.
Yeah, yeah, he was, well.
That's a blogger, so it was not the guys that were.
Oh, yeah, I was just curious, but I've seen a ton of posts, it's, it's getting a lot of coverage, as far as.
They got here earlier than what they said they were going to, and they stuck with it and stayed here, worked weekends, Saturdays, Sundays, till sundown, just like every day, working on it, and it is built solid, they did a great job.
There's a lot of kids already using it, right?
Yeah.
Good. I see our, our new guy is doing all your inspections that you used to send us, Herr Bill Trog?
Yeah.
So I assume, I assume things are working out well on that end?
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything, so.
Yeah.
It's good.
Did you happen to send out any reminders again about quit mowing the lawns up there on the side? Bill Magno's grid after, after being laid for about a week, they already took a rig to the dirt.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I'm not, they're responsible for it. We noted it. Uh, if it dies, we're not replacing that.
Okay.
They got, they got told they were sent out, if they do that stuff, they're on.
I thought I was wondering if it was noted or not, cause that, that first one we caught right away.
We, we sent out the instructions and how they shared everything, and said do not mow it for whatever stretch, I can't remember what it said, but. They were given it, I'm not gonna hold hands and babysit.
Okay, no, no, I don't, but I just wanna know if it was noted, cause Bill and I agree with it anyways.
If we, if we see it, um, we are putting it in the construction diary and everything, so if there's ones you do see, I guess, we aren't here every day anymore, so let us know.
We'll bring some handouts to the two hearings too, because there's one little paragraph that talks about your concrete as well, so.
Okay. All right. Things are looking good. Sean, all over, the guys are doing a great job, they got a real team put together here again, so. So it'd be good for you, good for the city. Thank you. Any other questions for Sean? All right, thank you, Sean. City engineer Jenna, you got a report tonight?
I think I've been covered in a lot of everybody's report, so. Um, and plus both items today, so I don't think there's anything more to add.
Well, the SAT cap put down, eh?
SAT cap put down.
SAT's done, and so fit that into the south one's done.
Oh, it is, okay.
So, we have everything covered?
Good.
Just before the rain falls?
Yep, that'd be good.
Yep.
Good deal. All right, any questions for Jenna?
Just to thank you, she's been helping us with some new state grant programs that we're gonna start taking a look at. And then, um, she and her staff were helping me today with, um, believe it or not, um, discussions and planning for fifteenth. Because it's made kind of the first round, that certainly doesn't promise anything, cause he goes, we received one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six pages of applications for it. But they did a follow-up with us for some clarifications, and he gave us some helpful hints, and the advice that, um, Dave and Joe gave was helpful for that, and will come in handy, and so obviously we'll keep working together for that and side about programs and things coming up, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jenna.
Yeah, Jenna.
All right. No library director tonight, so fire chief, what do you got?
So for the month of September, we had a total of sixty-two runs, twelve fire calls and fifty EMS. Um, executive board is setting up interviews for next month, so we're looking at interviewing eight, uh, candidates to hopefully fill four positions. Party update on the breakfast, mayor touched on the open house, and then last thing I had was we did receive a grant from Compuire Financial, four thousand dollars, so thanks to Carla, enjoy it, uh, for helping with that. So that's gonna go, uh, towards purchasing turnover, we got a few sets that need replaced to stay current, so that'll go to help offset some of that, so.
You guys, your new truck's working out well?
Perfect.
I'm just happy that, and you're rocking the Killer Chief stash, man, that thing's really. My wife even saw that on Facebook or somewhere, and she goes, holy cow, look at that thing. Yeah, it's like good. Or that's what she saw, but there's a picture somewhere. Yeah, that's perfect.
Congratulations on that.
That's a big deal, man, when you're controlling all these firemen, you gotta have that.
Yep. Any other questions or comments from chief? All right, thanks chief, doing great. No library director tonight, so we go to committee commission boards, chamber of commerce. Uh, think local first newsletters in there with a lot of information coming up for the next couple of three months. Back vocals and ball festivals. Anything else you wanna add out? P D H R A coming up next Tuesday, we have.
Meeting on it is the twenty-fourth, is moved to the twenty-fourth.
Is that right?
Yes, at six o'clock, at all time. It's on the twenty-fourth before the council meeting.
Is that right, before Wednesday?
Before the council meeting on the twenty-fourth.
It is before the council meeting.
At exact all time.
All right. Finance? Guess we're gonna talk about that, coming right up. Library?
Um, not much. We met with the, um, architecture, uh, folks and, um, group ideas and designs that they can help with, so. They're looking for, uh, feedback from the committee on.
Uh, park board, we had a meeting last night. There's a fellow that's interested in converting the back metal park field into a, a baseball field and getting a mound and everything installed in there, uh, for a traveling need, so. They're, they're willing to pay, they have the money to pay for it, the stuff they wanna add to it, so.
Where, where is that gonna be at?
The back field, the old field that went up there.
Yeah, well, way, way back in the end of it.
Really? That one or what?
Oh, okay. That's cool.
Mosses, tall grasses, Russian sage, golden flowers.
That's the, I think, that's the Steve Park, what they're looking at, what we have, some of that.
Where did that come from?
Sandra.
Oh, the park room?
Okay, park, okay, there's adventures, there are acts, okay, gotcha. All right. Okay, personnel? Nothing yet?
Nothing so.
Mines on?
Nothing.
Public safety?
Nothing, life or death going on.
Nobody throwing tacos at each other, is that?
Well, that happened, but it's not even high one, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanna thank you too, that I've heard a lot of good stuff about your service so far down here, since you've taken over. And one of them even, I got ahold of Cheryl, just cause I, we've been dealing with so many tent encampments and rock shows, we're like crazy. So on my way to work that morning, and I saw that tent down there, and I just said, oh, I hope it's not coming down, like, just, you gotta be on it right away. I got ahold of Cheryl, and she said you were already out there, like, right away, so. I appreciate that stuff, because it can be very problematic for not on it right away.
Yeah. Well, public works help me out.
Well, fucking works out now with that, so.
Well, thanks, Sean, that's good too. And I have no idea of the situation, I don't, I mean, and I really normally am not that nosy about it, but man, it's really become an issue in the city of Rochester, so it's.
Questioning how long we're even. I don't know, six days? Hey, I haven't heard if there's.
Yeah, you, so you guys scooped up the, the property and are holding it? Because there, there wasn't anybody there at the time? Yeah, I don't know the exact amount of time on that, I can probably find out, but we do have to hold on to it, just in case they claim it.
Yeah, and we did, I mean, it was on.
Yep.
Now, Justin's doing a fantastic job, since the day you got here. Thank you for that, listen. Public Works? Nothing. Ready?
No report.
Roll call?
No report.
Trans心意 committee?
No report.
Communications, you got your energy assistance from some CAC that's there for.
If citizens want, can take advantage of that.
Explain where they can go get that, get some help with their, some of their energy problems. All right, open mic, anybody want to use the open mic tonight? Don't look like it, we're looking for the last.
I'll move to you.
The motion's withdrawn, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, withdrawn.